So I am going to use my executive powers as Mayor Pro Tem to approve the minutes of the meeting of April thirteenth. We are not going to approve, we're going to put a hold on the bills for future date. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the last meeting of April thirteenth.
Motion to adjourn the last meeting of April thirteenth.
All in favor, raise your hands please. Okay, I have a couple of letters I'd like to read. This one is from Mayor Sean Webington. To the Board of Aldermen and City of Dixon, I'm giving my resignation as Mayor of the City of Dixon. I have enjoyed serving the public and all employees. It truly is remarkable to see government in action. I have been privileged to serve in this capacity and will take away fond memories and cherished friendships. The successes that the Board of Aldermen have made in the past is remarkable. I commend them on paving streets, working with our schools on the implementation of the School Resource Officer Program to make the children of our community safer. A few months ago, the Board of Aldermen were able to end a long abatement with the Department of Natural Resources. This was accomplished by teamwork and understanding by Aldermen, city workers, and supervisors. I commend the city workers, maintenance supervisor, police department for having a passion to work for our community and to consistently strive to grow as individuals and grow in their chosen profession. I thank you all for a job well done. You are truly the backbone of our city. I recently had a discussion with a friend and mentor. He asked me a simple question. What would happen if focused the same, if I focused the same energy and effort into my faith and family that I have done building calls, attending meetings, and being there for the city? Where would I be? That struck a chord for me. Time is something that you don't get back and you always wish you had more of. I intend to focus on what is important to me and my core, my faith and my family. I thank my wonderful wife for always being my rock and her constant support, her uplifting spirit and Christian example. I thank each of my kids for being patient with me when I explained that I couldn't go fishing because of meetings or my perception of lack of time. Now, as I focus on the strengthening of my faith and making sure that I am present and engaged for my family, I would like to thank each and every one of you and ask you, continue your prayers. I wish you well in all and of your future endeavors. Warmest regards, Sean Webington. And I would like for someone to make a motion to accept this letter of recognition, resignation.
Do we need to call the board?
No, we're still...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we thank Mayor Webington for his time and the service that he's given this community and that we accept his recognition and wish him well.
And I second that.
Roll call vote. Barbara Thomas.
Yes.
Eddie Kilges.
Yes.
Mike Brown.
Yes.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Paul Watson. Marlene Blackburn.
Yep.
That accepted five to, five to zero.
This next letter is from John Doyle.
Excuse me, Mayor. I noticed that Mr. Doyle is present. Mr. Doyle, would you like to speak to the council?
I don't have anything to say. If they had any questions, I would possibly field, nothing indicative of it.
Okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity since you were present.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And after I read this letter, then if you do, you have questions, anyone, you're more than welcome to answer. Okay. To Honorable Mayor Webington and Dixon City Council, this is our engineer, John Doyle, City of Dixon, City Engineer. Honorable Mayor Webington and City Council, please accept this letter of resignation from the position of City Engineer for the City of Dixon. I have enjoyed working with the city and will miss working with the people of the community. However, I have discovered additional opportunities that will challenge my growth and future my career as a professional engineer. This wasn't an easy decision because I am truly grateful for the rewarding and challenging employment the city provided my company over the years. But after many hours of consideration, my decision is now final. I hope the transaction for this position is smooth and wish the City of Dixon the best in all its future endeavors. Again, it has been a pleasure working as a part of your team. Best regards, John Doyle. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any questions for Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, does he have any recommendations for replacements?
I'd like to make a motion that we thank Mr. Doyle for his service, wish him well in his future endeavors, and accept his resignation.
Roll call vote, please.
Barbara Thomas.
Yes.
Eddie Kilges.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Eddie, yes.
Yes.
Marlene Blackburn.
Yes.
Accepted resignation, five to zero.
And this is another letter from myself, from the City Council, I'd like to read. I realize these changes are coming as a surprise to the people of Dixon. I want to reassure them that they have a strong new city government in place that is familiar both with the problems facing our community and the proper procedures for confronting them. Many of these problems have been ignored in the past, are left unattended until they have reached a critical stage, and now we are forced to deal with them as they arise. Please be assured, your council has the talent and ability to handle your affairs and bring your city government back into balance. It is going to take some time to address the many areas that have been left unattended, and I ask that you have some patience as we sift through the areas to determine what needs the most in first work. Rest assured, our city is going to survive. It is going to survive because there are many of us who love it, who want to go on living in it, who are going to work hard to straighten out the problems facing us. Thank you all for your help, please continue your support, and God bless us in our continued efforts. Thank you. Okay. I am going to take my executive powers as the Mayor Pro Tem, and I am going to approve the minutes of the last meeting, April the thirteenth. Also, we are, we are going to put on hold the bills for a future date. All right, now we are going to our new agenda. Mrs. ... Pardon? Roll call.
Barbara Thomas.
Present.
Eddie Kilges.
Present.
Mike Brown.
Present.
Marilyn Timmons.
Present.
Marlene Blackburn.
Present.
You have a call.
Fudge relations, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone here to say prayer? John? Did you say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, we just like to bless this town, bless this community, people at this meeting, and the people that we have put in charge to run this city. Father, we pray that you guide their hands in every decision that they make and just let the people know that, you know, all the, everything we do is to bless you, Lord. As we continue with these resignations and the people that fill them, allow us to find quality people to refill those and help guide these people as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We are going to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request the bond payment, the discussion before the closed session.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we move bond payment. Discussion forward and then proceed to closed session.
All right. So I second that. Roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Barbara Thomas.
Yes.
Eddie Kilges.
Yes.
Mike Brown.
Yes.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Marlene Blackburn.
Yes.
Eddie, two, five to zero.
Turn that over to me.
All right. Many of you may know that we have a bond and with the Security Bank of Kansas City, Corporate Trust Division. Currently, I will read off the accounts first, and anyone's life is welcome to add this up. We have two separate, well, we have two, we have several accounts with two separate banks. With the Marys County Bank, I'll tell you the accounts. This account is the replacement extension reserve account. The current balance is $3,000.
Before you go any further, can you break that down a little bit and explain to them what it's for, other than replacement? Can you break it down a little bit further? Like, was it issued for...
That's all we have on there.
That's all you have on that?
Replacement extension reserve.
Is that, is that for the replacement of the sewer treatment plant equipment like that? I know there's supposed to be an account for that.
We haven't received any statements to ascertain what exactly that account is. We're milder and providing the account names and titles and the balance that is in them. We, with a new council, we have not been privy to all the members on that, just merely a monthly statement. But we have requested those.
And we will provide as much information as we are able to gain as we gain it. The water system, this would be the reserve water system, we do know that, $30,046.51. The CDBG account...
Hold on, hold on. What was the last one, thirty or three?
CDBG, current balance, $6,456.17.
Excuse me, Mr. Doyle, do you have any indication what the CDBG account is?
CDBG is a community development block grant?
That's what I was guessing.
You're correct in that, but to my knowledge, this city does not have a community development block grant or has been awarded one since I've been here. Okay?
Thank you for that information.
Debt service reserve.
We did have a community development, that, we had a grant, and that was, if I may ask you, John, back in, the grant, the block grant that we got, the community development money?
Yeah, that's a long time ago.
Yes, but there should have been a hundred thousand dollars left.
It was when I left office.
Well, the account was opened in, on February 18th of 2011. There's been no deposits or contributions to that count since April 27th of 16, two years ago. And the last deposit made in that count was $597.85.
Talking about the community development fund?
Yes.
That, that was never supposed to be diminished. That, the purpose of that fund was supposed to be lent out at low interest rates for community development and then repaid back into the fund and kept intact. Somewhere along the line, some portion of the city government decided to use it for other purposes and it went away.
It should have been sitting there. I was told that it was still in an account and there was a hundred thousand dollars left.
I don't know what happened to it.
When were you given, uh...
My left, it was intact.
When were you given this information?
A year ago.
A year ago? Well, I can assure the public that we will look at those detailed statements to show what each check was written for and any transfers or any cash withdrawals or whatever, and I can assure my ward, I'll get to the bottom of that.
How far back can you go on those accounts to...
We can go back to the time they were opened.
Okay.
A lot of those records may be archived due to the dates, but they are still records, I'm sure, that we can request and get.
And I believe that Betty McPherson, wasn't it Betty McPherson or was it you that got that grant, John?
I did.
Oh, hi Betty. So there goes, hey, yes, Betty.
Betty Mc...
Yes, here she is, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you sitting there.
Betty, if you don't mind being included in this conversation, do you call what the original amount of the grant was?
Three hundred and... Now, that grant was to refurbish. You had to have a big fat percentage of low income, and we had it, and we met the criteria for that. And the area was over all around the elementary school and other, after that was taken care of, then we could use it outside other houses in town. My grant was for the refurbishing.
And that was, that was a restricted fund?
That was, and we, we used every dime of it because if we didn't use it, you lose it.
Okay. So it was liquidated, that?
Oh, that was. Now, the one that John's talking about, that wasn't actually a grant, was it?
That was a community development fund.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. That was a revolving fund. We were supposed to loan the money out at low interest, and they were supposed to pay it back into the fund, and we were supposed to keep using it indefinitely.
Okay, let me, let me ask you, loan the money out to whom?
Small businesses.
I don't, I don't know where the money got, was diminished. It was at some point in the, in the...
It was starting businesses.
It disappeared.
Is to generate businesses within the city?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Do you, either of you have any knowledge whether or not any business did borrow monies and if those monies were repaid?
Well, I, that I don't know.
Well, I know one, and John lost it.
Yeah, the one that, out there by Barnett's.
The iron...
Yeah.
You loaned that one out, John, that was the iron...
I can't think of his name now. He had the fire across it from me. He borrowed money from us.
The iron.
He was a little flaky too. I don't hope he ever paid back.
Yes, that's it.
That should show on record very easily for you to pay back.
John, that was Bales', and I remember that.
Bales!
Yes.
And was, was, was the monies repaid?
It was.
With the calculated amount of interest that we charged, so it was repaid?
John, do you remember that being repaid?
I don't know. I...
I believe it was.
Yeah.
I think he was right on the money. I think he came back, gave every bit of it back.
Yeah.
Do you recall what was in the reserve when you were in office?
Everything, everything was repaid. I only, all, there was only one loan made when I was mayor, and that was repaid.
Betty, do you recall?
No, I, I don't.
That was to that, that machine shop company. Remember what's his name? Machine shop company?
Yes.
He, he repaid every penny.
He did.
Once we receive the records off of this account and we go back, we can ascertain what the money was used for.
And I'm sure that, oh, you'll be able to find that. You have to be able to find that.
Me, natural being.
You would. There would have to be some withdrawal and deposits made into that account or checks written.
He did say it was a hundred thousand that he remembered was in there when he left office. I remember him saying that previous.
Around a hundred thousand.
Yeah, he said that previous, yeah.
I knew it was a hundred thousand.
I assure you, I will, if you do my word, get to the bottom of that.
And what's the balance now?
The balance now is six thousand...
Somewhere along the line.
$6,176.17.
Somewhere along the line, they decided to start using that money.
Thank you.
Pay bills and stuff, that's what happened.
John, is it possible that that was, part of that was used to refurbish the, the factory?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. They used it for some purpose. They diverted it to another purpose at some point, I know, I know. I remember there were some complaints at the time, some questions about illegality of doing it, but they overrode and they just did it. Somebody did it, they used it for another purpose.
Well, the account won't provide us with all the information as to what, what happened with the money, so we'll look into that.
As far as I know, I have always thought the money was still sitting. As far as I know, the money was supposed to be in the account.
All right.
At least a hundred thousand.
But see, as long as that money is in that account, as long as that money's in that account, it should grow interest too.
There's gotta be a paper trail, right?
Well, sure, if it's an interest-bearing account, yeah.
Nobody's just ever looked at it.
But there will be records that will show deposits, withdrawals, checks written. We can add it up and see exactly what happened. And for my ward, I assure you, I will do that.
Somebody took the money.
I will also be looking into it. Let me continue on, and please follow where this is going. The debt service reserve is, current balance is $3,185. The equipment fund is at $675.
Oh my gosh, are you kidding me? Sorry.
The vending account is at $2,716.68.
So we're broke.
Now, at the other bank...
It's Mid-America Bank?
Mid-America, they just changed their name.
Bank of Missouri.
Thank you.
Bank of Missouri.
Okay. We have a CD. This is CD 167177. Current balance is $5,009.66. We have a CD, current balance, $17,088.42. The last... Oh, I'm sorry, did I not read the CD number? CD number on the last one was 16473. CD number, 571692. Our general ledger, checking number 215880, had a balance of $51,811.73. However, payroll went out today, approximately $32,000 was taken from that in order to pay We have a bond due, payment must be sent out tomorrow.
Kind of short, aren't we?
Yes.
Now, let me ask you something on the, the water bills. The water bills is where we get a lot of our money from for our...
Absolutely, where a lot of our revenue is generated.
Yes, and we're not getting enough from that, I understand, because there's no late charges being levied or anything of that nature.
We'll, we'll begin into that later, so just focusing on the bond payment right now. Understand that these accounts that I've told you, that they are appropriated funds and for, some of these funds cannot be moved. They have to be used, they're restricted. Some of these funds can. The replacement extension reserve, to our knowledge, this can't be touched. CDBG, which we were just talking about a moment ago, to our knowledge, can't be touched. Debt service reserve, which has $3,185 in it, in what our understanding it can. Equipment fund, needs to be used for equipment. Vending account, can't touch it. We can liquidate the three CDs that I've mentioned, however, that still keeps us roughly over about $13,000 short.
Oh my goodness.
To my understanding, Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, if we do not make our bond payment, the entire mountain comes due in eighty days, or thirty days, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Is that not correct, John?
You're talking about the bond payment for the, for the roads?
They can call their bond and it is due immediately.
The $970,000 one we owe?
Which bond are we discussing?
The revenue bond?
The road?
Is that the road?
Is that the road bond?
No. If I remember right, that, that bond is coming out of revenue from the street, from the water and sewer departments.
Now, there's two bonds. We have the traffic bond, we have the road bond.
Yeah, you got, you got one for the street, and you got one for the water and sewer. Water and sewer is the revenue bond, the revenue from the water and sewer programs, department should be paying for that bond.
But they can call that no due if we are late in full, is that correct, John?
Is there any way that we can negotiate with them and say we have a new council? We're working on something to financially correct our problems?
We have matters that we're going to address in closed session that are personnel sensitive, and we're hoping to get some answer and resolution in that respect this evening.
Say we say the default, what do we do then?
Well, I'm not an attorney, and it appears we do not have our city attorney present tonight. Does anybody know why?
The council has to ask the mayor, have the council to, for attorney to be here. On the last go around, the council itself did not ask attorney to be here, so...
Okay, well...
You know, there is a way that we could currently meet this payment, and that would be to reappropriate some of the funds. We have $30,000 in our water system. However, if we reappropriate some funds out of this account, those must be paid back into this reserve.
Let me interject too. When I was on the council between twenty, or 2014 and 16, and John can justify this, when we initially increased the rates the last time, there was a three hundred and some thousand dollar bonus in the water side and the sewer side, which would have accumulated to the funds of about half a million dollars. Now, what has happened to that money?
We would like to know as a council ourselves, Mrs. Schultz, we would like to know.
Am I right or wrong, John?
It was, I think it was Toby.
Probably Rob.
No, it was, I remember it correctly. It was three hundred and some thousand dollars for the water and three hundred and some thousand dollars for the sewer, and it was money that was collected from the initial time that the rates were increased until we utilized the bond.
And, and based upon that rate increase and what you're saying, generated revenue, say on a monthly basis or...
And it couldn't be touched.
Annual basis.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, but quite frankly, we are in the dark right now. We have to request those records.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we had money, and I, we need to find out where that money went.
That's why we're requesting the banking records and statements to see what happened. We are exactly where you are right now. We want to know what happened with the money. We're a new panel, we've made the record request, but it, it takes time for the banking facility to provide us with that information. I wish I could say we could get it in one day, but when you go back through years, it takes a while to compile that.
Can I address the mayor real quick?
Sure.
Barbara Thomas and Michael Brown, I would like to recommend that they be on the voucher that you signed so you can have access to accounts at the banks and take Watson and whoever else is on it off, because they are going to be more beneficial at what we're trying to accomplish than someone else.
I agree. I agree.
That's, that will be up for discussion soon, but because of the pressing... That's, that, that will be up for discussion soon, uh, but because of the pressing matter of this bond, uh, we will, the plan would be to move approximately fourteen thousand from the water reserve, uh, and liquidate all of the CDs so that we do not default on our bond. Now, that being said, we must have a plan, and I suggest a graduated plan of starting off with a hundred dollars a month, to pay back the water reserve and then the council vote as we see an increase in our cash flows and our revenues that we increase that payment to pay back this reserve.
Mike, let me ask a question, is this a monthly, um, how, how often do we pay this, this bond payment?
Semi-annual, every six months.
Every six months, so we have six months to accumulate the funds for the next payment? And still put back what we've drawn from the other accounts, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got a question, if, instead of taking the money from the water reserve, how about the Eagles Nest account?
To my knowledge, the only accounts are the head counts that we, that I read off.
What is, what is this account?
It was started in nine, two thousand ten by the board at that time, when they sold the, uh, brown shoe factory. So it was originally had a deposit after putting, uh, according to the minutes, repaying what they borrowed to get fixed the bill, fixed the building for sale. They paid that back, they purchased the CD, and I think there was at that time two hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And what time period are we talking about?
Approximately October two thousand ten.
Two thousand and ten. Well, we have checked, or I don't wanna say we, Mr. Brown has checked with the two banking facilities, and this is all that they gave us to say that the city, uh, these are the only city accounts that they show.
I believe it, the minutes do say the account number too.
Do you know, is that in another facility outside of Dixon?
I couldn't say, I can't remember which bank it was with, but I don't think it was outside of Dixon. It was either Mid-America or the Marys County, I'd have to look at the minutes again.
Mr. Brown can address that as to what he requested from both of the banks here in town. That, you weren't provided any information regarding that.
I, I don't have any of that's account. Now, do you happen to know, Robert, would you be able to find the, uh, account number? And then we can look into that.
Yeah.
That also being said, we also must be careful with how the money is appropriated. Again, some accounts cannot be reappropriated for some purposes.
They are strictly limited, um, to certain line items, and if we breach that, that's a big problem.
According to what the notes I, the minutes I read, this was pretty much an open account to be used, or whatever.
Basically, an emergency account, is it?
Something like that.
Those were all set up to be for economic development at one time. Any monies that were released to new businesses that they were, now that I'm, you know, I'm old. But if, those monies were to be set back as economic development. So the council would have had to do something to allow them not to, to get those funds.
It had to have been appropriated.
Yes.
Exactly.
Because the check needs to go out, however, tomorrow.
I'd also like to make a recommendation that you review last year's minutes. Uh, prior to October's bill, I mean, uh, budget being approved. Somewhere in last year, the council discussed purchasing vehicles. And the mayor sat here and read off every bank account and balance at that point in time. And it was staggeringly different than what you're reading now.
Which month was that?
I don't know, it's somewhere.
That would have had to have been before October first.
Somewhere prior to October.
Yeah, 'cause October first is the one you have to have the, the budget in.
We can, the video's available.
There should be one more.
Well, I, I will say, uh, on behalf of my ward, that I'm very concerned, um, with the money situation here in, uh, in the city. I'd like to know myself where all this money went to. Mike has requested the records and they are itemized records with copies of the checks, any, uh, withdrawals, any deposits, uh, or any cash withdrawals.
One other question.
And I will be going over that, for lack of better words, with a fine-tooth comb.
One other account, transportation funds.
Yeah, they read that.
Did you have one?
Yeah, I remember that account also.
Transportation tax, half, half a cent, sales tax.
That's right, because, yeah.
Since January first nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, we discussed that before council.
Now, is that, is that provided by the state for the revenue on that? And do they typically pay that quarterly, annually?
Monthly.
Monthly?
I believe so.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, when I was on the council, I think they were in debt to us, weren't they? Yeah, they owed us money then, because I remember having a conversation with him and I think Jesse and, um.
Within the last year, there was supposed to be a, um, a new account set for that because they DDA it directly to, and it varies monthly depending on what you sell.
Right, right.
But it's DDA to that account, and I didn't hear that account mentioned for sure, okay?
I, I do not believe that we could reappropriate that account, however.
No, no you can't.
But there's a bond on that money that we could spend, does that make sense? Like, there's a road bond, and if this is the, the, the road bond that we did, then that must definitely come from that.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. Um, well, what we need to do is look into the state of Missouri, um, I believe it's the divisional taxation. I'm trying to recall when I was treasurer, I handled park monies, all that, uh, we received the sales tax money.
Same here.
Um, and I, I recall sometimes if we were late on receiving monies, um, and get them to send the money. So if our money's being withheld, for lack of knowing, um, I'm sure you don't like that call.
May, if you don't mind, would you like to know what you got?
John?
Yes, yes, I would.
Mike?
Yeah.
John?
Oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, when I looked at the, uh, when I looked at the bills.
Is this our copy, do you have extra copy?
When I looked at the bills, on, on the last council meeting.
Yeah.
I noticed there was an expenditure of twen, over twenty thousand dollars that was made without city council approval. How long has something like that been going on? Who can spend twenty thousand dollars without the city council approving it?
Well, we, we're looking at that as well.
I mean, that's, that, that couldn't, that shouldn't be able to happen, that's for sure.
We are concerned about that, uh, John, and, and we are definitely looking into that, we are made aware of that, and.
Make sure that doesn't happen again.
The gentleman that brought me the sheet, I apologize, Robert.
Robert Baker.
Robert Baker, thank you very much, I appreciate your help and your information sheet. But it looks like the city payment, the revenues from seventeen to eighteen have substantially decreased from this day.
The, uh, on the far right, you'll see the total for the year.
That's what I'm saying.
Now, you've got two different ones, the top one for each year is for the regular sales tax, the bottom one is for your transportation tax. Looking at year by year, there, oh, essentially.
Now, there, there's been in transportation tax from last year to this year, that we're only, we've only received one-third of the amount.
Are we privy to the amounts?
Sure, I don't see why not. For the annual total for twenty seventeen, the, um, the amount was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four ninety-eight, uh, received on an annual basis in relation to this year of only fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
That's only up tomorrow, what they paid to date.
Through date, okay, I got you. Um, that is through, actually, I don't know that it's through date, because the sheet runs through December.
Look at the bottom left, you'll see where it says updated.
Okay, okay, got you. And then eighty-one thousand six hundred and forty-nine forty-three in relation to twenty-two thousand so far for this year. So if we look at that on a quarterly basis, it may, that may be uncharged, that may be on, that may be on.
From what I've, talking to them before, when I originally got it, they say these are monthly deposits.
Jesse, do you know, is this deposits to our checking account, or where is this deposit at?
He just went to our check account, he's changed that to go into the credit account, and, um, I don't think I gave you that, those other ones that, um, I probably should have, but we can come back and revisit that at another time, on those other accounts.
If it goes on transportation funds, I would think we have to spend on transportation.
It could be spent on transportation, and I think like John had indicated.
But if it is a bond.
But if it's a bond.
It does tell a bond.
It's very specific, um.
It could be spent on the bond's payment. If it has anything to do, correct me, John, if I'm wrong, if it has something to do with the roads, it can be spent on that road, such as gravel, asphalt, stuff like that.
And just new equipment, John, is that your understanding?
If you read at nine five, when, when this thing passed, the bond issue was very specific on new construction, okay? Which is the bond payment that we're paying now, that was new construction, new asphalt. But say you, um, uh, in speaking with the bonding guys, uh, say you put in a new water line and had to tear up your new street, and you replaced it new from the water line all the way up, gravel, and repaved it. Then you could, only in the road right away. If this water line was a mile long, but only covered twenty foot of a roadway, then I could only do twenty foot.
Right, and it wouldn't cover anything for like resurfacing, it has to be new construction, is that correct?
New construction, resurfacing a new, that would be considered a new, um, overlayment, or a new surface, if you will.
That's my, that was my question, to make sure that if we were resurfacing an existing road, would that be classified under new? Okay.
And that was the understanding that I had with them, with, prior to renewing our old bond, which we just did not very long ago, and they said absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry, would you say that last sentence again, that if we're resurfacing, it can be used as declared as a new?
If we are resurfacing overlay on an existing road, we can do, because that is a new resurfacing.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, we, we can't use it for anything.
Potholes.
So in other words, we can't use it on any new lane?
Right. Potholes, yeah, to fill and things like that, you can, but for new resurfacing.
Maintenance items would be out, pothole work and, you know, shoulder work, ditch work, things like that, you need to be on a routine schedule.
That, not, okay, that makes sense.
So can I ask a question?
Which bond is due?
That's what I might question, which bond is due?
Jesse, which bond is due?
Here, I, I, I don't know what's on there, it's, it's the revenue bond, but, uh, John, I think this year is the sewer bond, right here. Because it is the lowest, the highest bond would be the newest bond, which is sixty-seven thousand, we paid out last time.
That's the nine hundred and seventy thousand dollar bond for the streets, right?
It says WWSS revenue bonds.
Yeah, wastewater, wastewater.
That's what I would make, wastewater and sewer services.
Yeah.
As far as reimbursement, there's an ordinance that we had to pass prior to the last bond issue, or the, um, yeah, the bond issue of, um, the project, the sewer project, and it's not necessarily required you guys quote reimburse that fund. Sewer and water in the city are the same, you can take sewer money and pay for water items, and you can take water items and pay for sewer items. And prior to them passing this bond or giving us the money for this bond, the council had to vote, okay? To verify that, that they give us an ordinance and said, before we give you this money, you have to pass this. So, in the city, those funds are interchangeable. If you, so that's, that's good to know, you guys don't have to do anything major, that's gonna be already ordinance here, okay? I mean, it doesn't solve some things, but it does kinda clear up how you can address that. Water and sewer are of the same, so I, and, and they were based off each other, and council passed that prior to them giving us the, the bond, passed the ordinance.
So the monies, let me see if I understand you correctly, the revenues that we receive from the water and sewer bills can only be used for water and sewer?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
We cannot pay bills from the city?
You can, if it's like, say.
If it relates to water and sewer?
Correct.
But not for bond monies?
Operation maintenance.
Yes, you could pay bond monies, if it's a sewer project bond or a wastewater project bond.
So this particular bond, which is a sewer service and wastewater, we could apply all the revenues from the collection of water and sewer bills to this bond?
They would recommend to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's what we got to do, and we've got to get, without saying too much in, in open session, we've got to get that addressed tonight.
So, now, I appreciate this information on transportation, however, I don't see how it could be reappropriated for sewer and water, do you agree?
I agree, they can't.
Do you agree? So, the only way that I, I see, uh, this is open for recommendation, the only way that I see us making our payment, which is has to be sent out tomorrow, is to reappropriate fourteen thousand dollars from the water system fund, water system account, with a plan to pay that back. And that way, our, our debt service can be made so that the bond is not called in full.
And to be fair, we should, because I'm sure that would be an interest-bearing account, that we repay at whatever the legal rate of interest is to that, basically borrowing to, to another. When I worked as treasurer, we, we'd have to do that in extreme situations. And as long as we have a thorough record keeping of the money's used, the money's put back in to show a separation between principal and interest payment when it's made, and do that on a monthly basis, um, I don't think we'd have any problems with auditors on that.
Well, that, that, also too. We haven't had a city audit in five years, you know?
I understand, and I'll be honest with you, I would love to sit right here and say tonight, before this council goes any further, we, we need an audit, an independent audit, we need to see what happened to this money. But financially, from what I've checked in, into, it'll cost between eight and twelve thousand dollars for an independent audit. We are just now trying to make payroll, we're trying to get the bond, we are trying to make payroll, we are trying to keep this city alive. And so we have to deal with items that are most pressing at hand, uh, in, in order to function at this, at this point. So, I hope through a joint effort with the whole board members and our mayor, uh, Pro Tem, that we can get some good things going, see what we can do to generate revenues, see where our areas of weaknesses are, what we need to change or amend in order to make that happen. And then once we're on our footing and we have revenue, I think that would be, one of my first priorities is to get a, a complete thorough independent audit. I, I'm not discrediting the state of Missouri, but I've been through two audits of myself when I was in office, and my audits were always good, but it's not a thorough audit. And that's why an independent audit would be a very thorough audit. We pay for it, um, and they're inclined to be more thorough in their work, and I think we really need it. Even from the aspect of maybe future grant monies, uh, the first thing they're gonna wanna see is your, your audit records, you know? How was your audit? Are there any grant monies in the past that weren't properly allocated or used, uh, et cetera? So, that, that's very important, but I am looking today at the existence and the livelihood of our city. This is my home, people, I am fearful, and I'm not gonna lie to you, I am fearful, and I am going to do everything in my power for my ward to get revenue in, to get payroll, get this bond paid, and move on and have a plan or course of action for the next six months till the next one comes in. That's the best I can do, and I hope that this community would be patient, this isn't something that can happen overnight. This isn't something that can happen overnight, be patient. Do you have any questions? If there's anything I can address publicly, call me, I'll give you my phone number right out loud. Five seven three, seven seven four, one four one three. You have any questions, you can call me. Please don't call after ten unless it's an emergency, because I like to go to bed and sleep. But if it's an emergency, you feel free to call me. But I will let, I will assure you, not just my ward, I wanna work for the city as a whole, okay? I care about John's ward, I care about Marlene's ward, and we are in dire straits right now. And let me tell you, we're gonna have a late night tonight because we are gonna try to figure out how to solve the most pressing problems at hand right now.
So, starting, so, okay, something that Diane tried to, starting now, because it's always follow the money, right? You gotta know where the money goes.
And that's what we're doing.
Okay, so can't we implement, Diane tried this when she was on council, okay? I mean, any job I ever worked, any company I worked for, which was a lot of the construction, heat and air conditioning, all of it, we had to account for every dime we spent, I mean, every dime.
Absolutely.
Even the maintenance on our trucks, we were responsible for taking down mileage, we got to such and such mileage, it went into the shop for oil change, that was what it cost to do that, uh, the hours that were worked.
Right.
I mean, I don't understand why this couldn't.
Invoices, invoices, invoices.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I won't, I can tell you right now, Mike and I have discussed this, and I think we see eye to eye, you know, every line item work is gonna be told by an department, hey, listen, uh, we've spent fifteen thousand on such and such.
Exactly.
Um, I'm of the ability right now, because of the dire straits and financial situation of our county, our city, I'm sorry, to cap the limitations as far as budget.
And, and to make them accountable for all of it, written reports, whatever it takes.
An approval before it's spent.
Until, until we figure this out, it will be a centralized type budget.
Right.
That means that we will be watching, there won't be a large general ledger. There will be appropriated funds for everything that we do. And over certain amount will need to be coming, obviously, this is something we're gonna have to talk more about.
Right.
This, the conversation today was just taking care of this emergency situation, and there's, there's more to this. We will be looking, we will be digging, we will find out where everything went, but it will take some time.
Right, but we, we have some plan of action, but unfortunately, that requires closed session because it involves personnel. That's the best summary I can give you, but believe me, we do have a course of action here.
I'd just like to add something for the public. The phone numbers for all the council members are public. Um, there is a list that's probably gonna be updated now that we have three council members. And that's what I've been, you know, doing so far, trying to talk to my council members. Just that the one, the council member that I have on my board on what, what three are unapproachable. And so, I'm glad I have somebody I can approach. Well, and she's been telling me since I've known her that exactly what is being discussed here. And she had made posts and has talked to people and told people over and over, and because we have voted criminals in, because they were friends or whatever, that's why we are where we are now. I'm just adding that.
So, thank you for all your input, we will be looking into this, I like, you can contact me as well. I'm gonna, we're gonna dig into this, promise you, what we know, we will let you know. I'd like to make a motion at this time.
Great, you made a motion about to, uh, take the money out of the hundred dollar club?
I was, yeah, I was restating it.
Okay, is that your motion or is that not?
Motion is that we move the, it's approximately fourteen thousand, uh, out of the water system account. Move the amount necessary to pay the bill, the bond.
And how much is the bond again?
Fifty one thousand. So it's trust number zero dash five three two seven dash ten for Dixon, Missouri, series two thousand fourteen WW and SS. I assume that stands for wastewater and sewer service revenue bond. The total amount due is fifty one thousand four hundred eighty six dollars and twenty five cents.
I need a second on that.
And in addition to that, that we repay it a hundred dollars a month plus interest at the legal rate, because that fund would be an interest bearing account.
And then as, as we fix our cash flows, we readdress that amount that we're paying back and adjust to increase as appropriate.
So I have a motion to do that.
I second it.
A real call vote, Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Eddie Tilges.
Yes.
Michael Brown.
Yes.
Cameron Timmons.
Yes.
Marlene Blackburn.
Yes.
That's five zero.
Wow, so cool. Okay, give me your word, go ahead.
Okay, so I'd like to, um, pass if someone makes a motion so we can go into closed session, please.
Benny, um, there's some folks here tonight that would like to, uh, address the issue of the, at the Lions Club Park, Lana. And I would like to keep that in, whoa, in open session, uh, since we're gonna be in a closed session for probably a while, so they can leave. If you don't mind.
Is that all right with everyone?
I think so, I think it's appropriate, there's no sense going to close, making them wait. Let's address our open items when we go into closed session, which will probably be pretty lengthy tonight. Then everybody can go home.
Yes, because we won't come back out for several.
Not, not late, it'd probably be late.
Uh, I'm, uh, the secretary for the Lions Club here in town. We are a small group of people, uh, we have less than twenty members. We have about ten that are active, uh, we do have, uh, a hard time raising money. But we have provided, as you can see, several pieces of equipment for the park. We do not own the park, it's called Lions Park, but we don't own it. It was an honor bestowed upon the park. Um, I, I'm assuming that it was given to us because we used to have carnivals in the park. The shed up, up there at the top of the hill was a concession stand, and that's what we store the Christmas decorations in now. But we don't own that, but we try to provide equipment for the public to use. The city provides the maintenance, and the city has always provided, um, the insurance for those pieces of equipment. However, there is some concern about some of the pieces of equipment. Uh, the pieces that, that's a concern was not provided by the Lions. I think someone must have just made it and donated it as a, as a gesture. I don't know who did that, uh, I know that it was.
Which one is that, Lana?
Um, it's some drums and, and pipes, and, um, it's been torn up, uh, and, and basically destroyed. Uh, that has been a reoccurring problem for the equipment in the park. We have had to, um, purchase toddler swings because they have been slashed. And you can't set a child in a swing that's got open sides. So we, you know, those cost under a hundred dollars, but still, it's under a hundred dollars, it's, it's expensive. Uh, we had a wheelchair swing there, it was destroyed. When we were able to purchase the big, excuse me, wooden set, uh, one of the swings was stolen. So we, uh, bought a, uh, to, to provide a handicap swing, we bought a new handicap swing for that. All the equipment up there except the slide, the hay wagon, and that funny guy with the cowboy hat, and the little bouncy thing, it was all bought by the Lions. And we would appreciate if people would understand that we do our very best to maintain that equipment. We spent five hundred dollars to get the wooden set refinished. We try to take care of those things, we do all the Christmas decorations, all the street decorations. We bought those along with the chamber, and we put all the new bulbs in, which takes up, you know, several hours. It's expensive to replace all those bulbs. And when people bash the park, we feel hurt. But we just want people to know that we are doing our best to maintain what we have, and we'd appreciate the city's support if we have a problem with that.
Can I make a suggestion? On the swings and everything that you have, anything that's detachable?
We crimped them.
Okay, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is, anything that you can detach, why not put it in that shed, okay? Because the park is supposed to be closed at, at dawn, uh, dusk, till dawn, okay?
What we, what we did is all.
I don't think so anymore.
There's, it should be, it's, it's a policy.
There's a sign there that says sunset.
Well, why, why's there lights around the park, I mean, come on, walk.
There is no signs, those signs were vandalized and tore up just this past week.
Well, to stop the left of the swings, we, we had someone come up and crimp the tops of them.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
So they can't be removed. No, it doesn't, but that's, we understand that's a hazard, it's gonna happen.
What you're saying, take them every night?
Yeah, take a minute. There's no way.
We have that same issue with the bathroom. Yes, we do, we have multiple, multiple vandalism reports on file.
Right.
Now, I don't know if those have ever been filed with insurance, that's above, that's beyond me. We've, we've had multiple cases, in fact, some individuals charged to the city court.
When you go through the area, do you turn your spotlight on, look around in the area? If you see that someone is there after dark, do you direct them to leave?
Yes.
The premises right away? Have you found that there is a repeat cycle with individuals, the same individuals basically after appearing there?
We did have, uh, we had two individuals that come to the top of my head, they were homeless. We found them sleeping in the tower slide, uh. They were charged multiple times through city court, they finally, I think, have moved on or went to prison, one of the two. We haven't ran into them probably in the last six to nine months.
Well, in that case, when they're homeless, I'm of the opinion, there are so many churches that help homeless people. You know as well as I do, if they're homeless, we throw them in jail, we gotta feed them, we gotta board them, that costs money. We know we're never gonna recoup anything from that if they're homeless. Might be a good effort to check with the local churches to see.
We've had many meetings with the ministry of Lions, um, that's a whole different topic.
I think another reason that they gather at the park as well is for wifi from here.
Yes.
They subtract the line.
Exactly, that's my point, which is, is there a way to curb that to where?
You can, you can shut your router off.
Shut the router off where they can't have it.
Well, the wifi, all you have to do is enter a password.
Yeah, you can, you can make, you can make, you can give the password payment for it.
You can hide that, where they can't even pick it up anymore.
But then that password, you can do that for you.
Well, when the library's shut down, the modem should be shut down.
They could simply unplug the router and close the business, I mean.
Absolutely.
So, the wifi is on just during library hours now, and in fact, I think it is off right now as we speak.
Wonderful, that when the library's closed, wifi shuts down.
I don't think that's correct, Jesse, because we still run people off nightly in this part of town.
They're up here all the time.
Is that right? Yes, sir.
What time, who closes the library?
The librarian and then closes at five thirty.
I'd have her unplug the modem or just shut it off like it's already.
It's still on.
Lana, back to what we were talking about, I believe the piece or two has been removed already. But I think the piece that is still up there still has some issues too, so, uh, I would like for that piece to be removed as well.
Lana, all of these screws have been removed today.
Exactly. Nobody, there's actually one more up there that's still there.
Okay, I was told that they were all out.
No, I'm gonna walk up there and see.
Like I said, these, these were not Lions equipment, this is not something that we bought. Also, you know, we, we, we don't have anything to do with the walking trailies. You know, that was put in by a committee, a group of people that got funds donated.
We'll be talking about that later.
Yeah, so, you know, I just wanna be clear what, what we are responsible for, or what we feel we're responsible for.
Lana, I just wanna clear something up too, I was no, and I said it earlier, in no way shape or form did bashing the Lions Club, I was bringing it to the people's attention that this could be a liability to the city.
Yeah, and I don't think people realize that we don't own the park.
That nobody does know the story.
Yeah, we don't own this park.
So who does, the city?
The city owns the park, uh, it was taken from the railroad.
I'm bothered with the Lions also. So several years ago, we went through this same thing. We think there was a lease from the railroad, okay, we think that. Now, there, we think there may also be a deed to the city that it's never found. So that's, we're kinda stopped at that point.
You know, I have to say, in my, in my, um, adventures with the Veterans Memorial, uh, I had a lot of conversations with broken northern people, and one of them, his name is Steve Guzman, K U C, M A, who has since retired, and he mentioned exactly what you just said. So I might be able to contact them again and find out exactly what that is.
I believe that could have been a, probably a ninety nine year.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's exactly right. Yes, I remember, I remember that, I'm part of a council meeting, I was sitting on council, I remember that.
I've heard some of that, I don't have.
Yeah, it was in a council meeting, Jesse.
So, do we pay anything for that lease?
No.
A dollar a year?
I'm not sure there's any.
Nobody's ever quite figured it out.
We really do appreciate the city's support when we put equipment in there, and we appreciate the police patrolling it as best they can. Uh, right now, there's several other pieces in there that are broken, and hopefully that those can be repaired. Uh, we are getting ready to put in a basketball goal up here on the end, and, uh, well, as soon as we can figure out how, how to get the goal in there, uh, it'll be completed, and, uh, we do appreciate your support on that.
My, my question, Lana, is who is responsible for the more light fixtures that?
The city. I think that's, people paid money for those.
Individuals paid for those.
For those, and the city.
In memory of their families.
Right, and the city supposedly was supposed to maintain them for them, and, and, as you know, they're, they're broken all the time. The goals are broken out and.
So do we have a, is there an, is there an ordinance that states if you're caught vandalizing, or the penalties are?
Oh, you don't need an ordinance for that.
They do.
If you're caught vandalizing, the marshal can pick you up, take you to jail, and.
Ask me about, ask me about the beautiful bathrooms I made in City Park, my experience with those.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to have an ordinance for vandalism, that is a criminal act, and, uh, that would be the, the marshal's.
If there is something out there that's dangerous, we need to know about it. Lana and I were up there not too long ago, I know it was cold and windy that day, but we were fixing some things on the little crime wall.
I wanna say to the mayor, Pro Tem's credit, she did send someone out there today, and now, now it sounds like she's gonna send someone out there again. But it was taken very serious, and, uh, I, I thank her for doing that, it was to her credit, she did that.
And I was told that they were all out, all of these screws had been taken out.
When you're talking dangers, uh, due to the central location of the park and the wifi accessibility, comes school closing time, this, this, we get a lot of shady kids down here. Almost daily, we pick up needles, pipes off the walking trail, in the swing sets, in the tower, it, it's terrible. We've addressed this with some of the council members. Bottom line, though, still yes, at the end of the day, I have one cock on. That's all we have, patrolling these streets. You can't be here and be there and be there everywhere at the same time. We do deliver to get through here, but we're gonna miss things.
Especially with cell phones.
Well, maybe we should have moved the police department down here in the maintenance shop instead of the maintenance. That probably would have resolved the whole problem, you think?
But a lot of these lights have been destroyed, the, the.
It would probably, then you don't have a job.
The wires were pulled out, there were, as I told you, there were raw wires hanging, so. The electric company came over and plugged those off. They also broke some of the benches.
As a fourth class county, uh, we by motion and, uh, with the mayor's recommendation and approval of the board, we, we can hire a night, a night watchman. We do have that authority, I've, I've researched that, but it comes back to our imminent problem. Money, 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 and that's. And that's why we, we need to resolve the issue with our revenues right now, hopefully get that resolved, get us on, get us on our feet, and then these matters, we can revisit them and see what we can do. And I'm not trying to table everything that's before us today, the, the potential problem with the park that you folks are speaking about, yes, we have to ensure that our children and our public are safe. We cannot let druggies go down there and drop their hypodermic needles down a tube and a child reach in it, if they're poked, we know the story, what the potential problem is. So yes, we do need to, we do need to, all as a community, be aware of that, and if there's something going on, call our marshal, call me, I'll get in touch with the right people to go check it out, to see what's going on. But we just have a lot of pressing issue again, and that's our revenue, and I would love to say, yeah, tomorrow, we'll order the new bulbs, put them in, get it all taken care of, we just don't have, we don't have the money.
Just one other thing, the city used to have, in their insurance, had an inspector come around and inspected this equipment.
Right, exactly.
And as a matter of fact, we had that big old slide years ago, and it was taken out because it was unsafe. So I don't know if you still do that, if someone comes in and inspects all that stuff and all.
I don't know anything about that, you been, you're Jesse here.
I made a note, I will, I will look into it.
But that's what they did, and we would go in and remove it or fix it, repair it, whatever it was.
What's a good way to get hold of these, any of the Lions, who's the president or whoever?
Okay, our home number is five seven three, seven five nine, six seven zero three, and my cell number is seven seven four, nine one zero three.
It was the insurance company that came and inspected the equipment.
Excuse me?
The insurance company? They did their own, they come and do their own inspection?
Yes, they do.
Whoever the city has insurance with.
With all that being said, I know that the mayor will redirect more workers to check that out for inspection, and understand that even, I'm gonna make a motion to table it, but that doesn't mean we're blocking this at all.
We, we just, we just want you to know what we feel like we're responsible for.
We appreciate that.
And we will gladly work with you to add equipment or whatever we can do.
Wonderful.
It's our finances that allow us to do.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks.
Lana, you have been very kind through the years. I've watched what you've done over here, and we appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to table the park until next meeting, to allow for discovery and further investigation of the matters.
Specifically insurance.
Specifically looking at the insurance.
I want the same thing, I'll say that. One day at a time. Priorities have to come first.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we will, we're gonna go out of open session.
See, you Friday night, sir.
Well, we're gonna go into closed session and take a right-
Jason keeps being a bell guard on it.
We'll call what's in, um, Mark Brown?
Yes.
Dave Childs?
Yes.
Mike Brown? Darren Simmons?
Bernie Blackburn? Yes.
Seven fourteen, we're in closed session.